Salt and rock chips, fuel, and then actual direct equipment repair costs. We're at just over a hundred and eleven thousand dollars in snow removal. Of that, sixty-three thousand eight hundred was in two thousand and third budget year. And then we're almost up to forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for this budget year. I just want to go ahead and provide you with that. Hopefully, we don't get too much more snow. Also, we are moving forward at the wastewater plant with the second phase of the projects that I had come to the council on a couple of years ago to get started. I wanted to sort of update you real quick on where we're going to be total costs. The red book had two point three seven million in it for projects down at the wastewater plant. We reworked the plan, came up with a new budget of around one point nine three five million. As we're getting close to the end, we're moving into this last phase. We'll have it done this year. It looks like we should be able to come in at right about one point eight nine million, which will fortunately be a little over four hundred and eighty thousand under what was put in the red book for the wastewater plant, which will help offset some of the other higher costs on other projects that we're dealing with. And that's all I have.
Well, how much was the salt that we've used so far? In that thirteen, fourteen?
Total on salt was forty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars is what we...
At seventy-three dollars a ton?
Seventy-eight is our base price.
And if we have to buy, if we weren't buying it, the summer price would be a hundred and thirty?
It ranges. We probably could have gotten some for a hundred and five this last time we did it too. But the prices I've been seeing are ranging from about a hundred to a hundred and thirty. And then apparently it's got to get even worse.
So we save about twenty thousand dollars at least in salt purchases. Not being able to buy it ahead of time and store it.
Well, we'll probably be able to store it when we did. We like to run out and have some real trouble.
Absolutely. Committee reports. Community, environmental, services, and welfare?
No report.
Finance?
No report.
Internal affairs?
Public safety?
Well, it works in transportation.
No report.
Resources and policy?
Nothing around that.
Ordinances and resolutions. We have a couple of ordinances here we have to address tonight. Employees contracting with the city. An ordinance amendment to add employees. You have to do some time to file.
Make a motion to replace this ordinance on its first reading by title only?
Second.
A motion on the second to place this ordinance on its first reading by title only? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance authorizing certain city employees and officials to contract with the city.
This time I'd make a motion that we suspend the rules and place it on its second and third reading.
Second.
By title only.
A motion on the second to place this ordinance on its first reading by title only? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance authorizing certain city employees and officials to contract with the city.
Motion to adopt.
Second. A motion to adopt on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have water rate ordinance that we discussed during the previous committee meetings.
Make a motion that we replace this ordinance on its first reading by title only?
Second. A motion on the second to place this ordinance on its first reading by title only? Any discussion?
What would be the date? I guess I'd... Mine is blank.
Oh, that's whatever you all want it to start.
It depends on whether we do one or three readings.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance establishing water and sewer rate increases and for other purposes.
Make a motion that we suspend the rules and place this ordinance on its second and third reading by title only?
Second. A motion on the second to place this ordinance on its second and third reading by title only? Any discussion?
At this point in time, because that date, if we're going to consider it for final reading tonight, the date needs to be established.
Are you talking about an effective date for the first time?
Yes, this would be what point can you start billing? Or what point do you all want it to be put into effect? If we do pass it on all three readings tonight, it would, by our thirty-day provision, it would go into effect as early as thirty days after its publication, filing publication. So that would probably be April first to be safe on that.
Do you have his own date, gentlemen?
July one.
Sounds good to me.
July one would require suspension rules from that day, would it?
No, but I want you all to resolve that so I can put it into the blank before we put it on its second and third reading. So we'll know when it goes into effect.
Yeah, July one?
I think that's good.
All right.
What's the second date?
Second date is the anniversary date for the automatic CPI increases beginning next year and continuing on the same time thereafter. If you started on July one of this year and may want to use July one as a date, or I guess we could run that rank for six months and start it on January one of the year. I'm not sure how early those CPI indexes. So it's your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
I think this is easier to keep at July first. I think it'll be simpler.
Everybody agree on the anniversary date, July one?
Should be traced by an annual percentage of the term by the annual... This one is a four point three increase for at least whatever time period between here and here.
And then do we, whatever this date is, will be from whatever...
From this July one to next July one?
Right, and it's set up for each year thereafter.
I just want to make sure we're not missing February to July one. For some reason, it would...
It would stay right here until this date, whatever date we do this.
We're missing it every once. We're missing that increase or decrease. Okay.
Everybody agree on July one for the second date?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion on the second to place this reading, ordinance on its second and third reading by title only? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
An ordinance establishing water and sewer rate increases and for other purposes.
Due production?
Second. A motion on the second to adopt the ordinance? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have a fire prevention code ordinance. Mark, do you want to address that a little bit before we? Or have we covered enough of that?
Well, I think it'd just be more answer questions if they come across any time since we... It's current paper now.
Do you have any questions on that?
I don't.
Mark? No? Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to replace this reading, or this ordinance, on its first reading by title only?
Second. A motion on the second to place the fire prevention code ordinance on its first reading by title only? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance replacing chapters eleven point oh four, eleven point sixteen, and eleven point two oh of the City Code of Harrison, Arkansas, by adopting the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, Volumes One, Two, and Three, 2012 edition, with local amendments and for other purposes.
Make a motion that we place this ordinance on its second and third reading by title only? What's the second rule?
Pass the rules.
Could be that.
The rules.
Suspense.
A motion on the second to place this ordinance on its second and third reading by title only? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who's thinking of that?
An ordinance replacing chapters eleven point oh four, eleven point one six, and eleven point two oh of the City Code of Harrison, Arkansas, by adopting the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, Volumes One, Two, and Three, 2012 edition, with local amendments and for other purposes.
Due production?
Second. A motion on the second to adopt ordinance? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fire mileage ordinance, I think we are postponing.
I need to apologize to the carry. I just haven't had time to get to this. I think we do have plenty of time, probably either... Probably the March meeting. I should be able to do that.
Well, around the November ballot, I believe, so.
Cut-off dates around July are always somewhere along that.
And we visited the other day a sales tax ordinance.
Okay, before each of you, you have a sales tax ordinance. And before we get into a discussion on this, I'd make a motion that we place this ordinance on its first reading by title only?
Second. A motion on the second to place a sales tax ordinance on its first reading by title only? Any discussion?
Will we... Is this what we decided on? Actually, we come back and we better depart. Yeah, we better depart, whatever.
I've got a few extra copies of the final version that came off the press. It's...
And then this is it up here.
It's on the one we got here.
Yeah, that's what you got. But for those who...
Okay, John on this here, have you read that thing here? That five percent on that's going only to scholarship fund?
I just read it when it was up there. And... I don't, you know, the question I'd have is how you're going to determine this, you know, the existing stuff we have, you know, has to do with, you know, they have to produce some... They have to produce some information about the need for the scholarship and things like that. What constitutes being able, or is it just anybody that can apply for, you know, get a scholarship if it's free for every, you know, to everybody that applies?
John, I want to ensure that this way, I think, between Parks Department and the Parks and Research Commission to set a guidelines similar to what you're following right now.
Well, what would that money consist of there? How much money?
About twenty thousand a year.
Twenty thousand a year?
Five percent of the ten percent.
Do you use the twenty thousand a year on the scholarship fund?
I don't believe it is because in all of them that... With the PAGNAZI scholarships, you know, they kind of change their, so then consolidate your use. You know, it's not near that high.
The reason it's set at this figure is because there, in my feelings, there's a lot of children out here, young and old, that if they knew this was available to them, they'd make use of it.
Right, do you turn that along? Do you usually have everybody cut?
I'm more less questioning the amount of money. If they don't use it, that's going to cook you. Yeah, this...
What we basically use is a free lunch program with the schools.
I mean, that is the thing that we use to determine that.
You got extra money there, you could always advertise and make it more aware to a lot of kids to do it.
And this is, if you figure this out, there's twenty thousand is only for two hundred and fifty kids. And I think there's that many involved right now and enough more that that two hundred and fifty would be met.
And that pertains to anyone, not just citizens.
Right.
Would it be just Boone County or either? I guess it'd be one period.
We have the Parks Commission. We have reached out to our Parks Commission and our parks to allow other young kids and student-age kids to come in here and participate in our courts. I think if they're coming in to use our facilities and everything and get part of the youth in this area, we should offer them the same opportunity.
I probably need to change the word citizens to youth then. Citizens would refer, I think, to citizens of the city rather than including someone outside.
In clarity, it would be good.
About youth, is that what you said?
I make a motion to amend the way it's presented to change the word citizens from citizens to youth. You don't have to do that. You said we don't have to do that.
Since we haven't voted on it, it's wanted to be as presented. Anything else you all want to tell us, that's fine.
Could I make one suggestion to you guys? You may even not want to have youth. You may end up with some adult programs that some senior citizens are...
No, we use the word those.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, there may be some senior citizens that would like to do something with swimming or something in summer or something.
Especially if, you know, especially if these funds that are dedicated to facilities would end up building an indoor pool or something.
That way it encompasses all ages. Yes.
One other question I have, did you change the percentage on the... How'd you derive the percentage on the Fire and Police Department on dedicated funds?
On the fifty and thirty percent?
Yes.
This is where we broke it apart with the chart that Luke had up here yesterday. And with those percentages, I think we can work good in the future. And then also, if you noticed, the other change that was in that related to that, to put those percentages in effect, it ain't no part of the ballot itself. It shows that the police dispatch fire percentage will be the base amount of last city building equipment, so.
It'll work well here?
Basically, that thirty percent on coverage depreciation reserve.
Yeah.
So we don't end up in the spot we're in today where we can't buy equipment or replace facilities.
Top of the question?
A motion on the second to place this ordinance on its first reading by title only? All in favor?
All in.
Johnny Savage?
Yes. Don Lepre. People voting.
Dan Roberts?
Yes.
Rick Griffin?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Jason Briscoe?
Yes.
Joe Crockett?
Yes.
Dan Sherrill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
An ordinance calling for a special election for the levy of a one percent sales and use tax within the city of Harrison and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto and declaring an emergency.
Due to the time limitations involved in this, I'd make a motion that we place this on its second and third reading by title only and suspend the rules.
Second.
A motion on the second to suspend the rules, place the ordinance on its second reading, second and third reading by title only? Do a roll call vote?
Dan Roberts?
Yes.
Rick Griffin?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Jason Briscoe?
Yes.
Joe Crockett?
Yes.
Dan Sherrill?
Yes.
Johnny Savage?
Yes.
An ordinance calling for a special election for the levy of a one percent sales and use tax within the city of Harrison and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Motion to adopt?
Second. A motion to adopt on the second? All in.
Ask for a question. You have a question, I'll amend. When would be the date?
The date would be stated in the...
I need to put something second.
It's April the eighth.
Second Tuesday and... Okay, we have a motion on the second without the ordinance? All in.
Rick Griffin?
Yes, put it on the ballot for the people voting.
Dana Taylor?
Yes, same comment.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Jason Briscoe?
Yes.
Joe Crockett?
Yes.
Dan Sherrill?
Yes.
Johnny Savage?
Yes, same comment.
Dan Roberts?
Yes.
We do need an emergency clause to make this work.
Make a motion that we enact the emergency clause on this ordinance?
Second.
A motion on the second to enact the emergency clause? All in.
You want to say?
Dana, no, 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 let's see. Yeah, Dana.
Yes.
I have to remember where I left off. Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Jason Briscoe?
Yes.
Joe Crockett?
Yes.
Dan Sherrill?
Yes.
Johnny Savage?
Yes, we want the same comment.
Dan Roberts?
Yes.
Rick Griffin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
To accompany that, we have the... What we call the trash for tax ordinance, which is the contractual commitment to the citizens that funds from the general fund portion will be used to provide relatively a free tax or trash service for residential trash pickup.
Make a motion that we place this ordinance on its first reading by title only?
Second. A motion on the second to place the ordinance on its first reading by title only? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance authorizing the payment of the monthly residential trash service fee for Harrison residents from general fund reserves.
Make a motion that we suspend the rules and place this on its second and third reading by title only?
A motion on the second to suspend the rules, place the ordinance on its first, second, and third reading by title only? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance authorizing the payment of the monthly residential trash service fee for Harrison residents from general fund reserves.
Motion to adopt?
Second. A motion to adopt on the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
I think we need an emergency clause because it doesn't even come into it.
Yeah.
That's all I have, young man.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should make a point to let people know that we're talking about thirty percent of the gross receipts in this sales tax, which is a greater amount than they're dedicating to any other particular.
That will go to pay for trash.
That's correct.
Absolutely. Any old business to discuss? Business, we had some things that are postponed, or that our discussion is postponed. Per diem rates.
Mayor, I was approached by some of the department heads last year regarding mileage rates and per diem rates. Currently, we are paying out fifty cents per mile. IRS standard mileage rate is fifty-six cents per mile. They did want me to bring that to your all's attention and request if you all had any objections to bumping it up to the IRS standard mileage rate. We don't really pay for a whole lot of mileage anymore. Most of that is done through our credit cards and paying for gas in city vehicles. But it does come up probably ten times a year, I would say. Also, the per diem rates, currently we are at thirty-five dollars a day per diem. I did some little research on the U.S. General Services Administration. The per diem rates for Arkansas in all locations except for Hot Springs and Little Rock, they are suggesting forty-six dollars a day. Again, just bringing this to you for your consideration, whether or not we could bump our current rate from thirty-five and amount up to forty-six dollars.
What would more incentive running a personal vehicle on city business?
Myself, I drive to Little Rock because I don't have a city vehicle. But to do my community education courses, the mayor does not have a city vehicle. I don't, Wade does not have a city vehicle. There are Christine, mostly in our administration departments, Brad.
Get in the mail every day.
The people that don't have city vehicles that have to drive to personal vehicles.
And the per diem is for meals out of town, and you can't probably buy three meals a day for thirty-five dollars if you're out of town.
Let's do this individually. I'll make a motion that we increase the mileage rate from fifty cents to fifty-six cents per mile.
Second.
A motion on the second to increase the mileage rate from fifty to fifty-six cents a mile? All in favor? Your vote? Motion carries.
Next question I'd make would be that we increase the per diem, per day, from thirty-five dollars to forty-six dollars for our employees.
Second. Motion on the second to increase the per diem rate from thirty-five to forty-six dollars? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Harrison Community Center grant denied. You want to talk about that, Don?
Yeah, I talked to Derek today in Hoover. Well, he actually got notification the first of the week. But the Red Eagle Heights buildings, that grant was turned down. They did encourage us to reapply. And according to Derek, he talked to the lady, that there was a good possibility that we could receive this.
was a good possibility that, that we could receive this grant in the future. It had to do with the number of people, obviously, that were applying for the grant. There wasn't enough money for everybody to get that, but I did, I assumed that, you know, and I think that our, the Parks Commission being in favor of going in and reapplying for that, trying to do it again, you know, it'd be, it'd be next year, I'm sure, so, but Derek was, all we had to do was just file it again with the, and, so I guess we'll proceed with that, you know, and have any problem with that. It would be, it's, I think with everything that we did, it was a little over $100,000. We should redo that, redo that building, make the ADA, and that.
You guys have no objection to leaving that building set until November next, this year, probably somewhere in that area, I think?
Yeah.
Till the nitrous grant cycle, to see if they can get that $100,000 grant, not we got these other ones, but eventually, so. There's no objection to leaving it set, we'll just leave it set like general.
According to Derek, you know, it was, they were encouraged with, with the way he was and said.
That's what I understood, because from the letter I got, was they were encouraged with the grant application, they just didn't have the money to go around.
You gotta mow and all that stuff, you gotta let, you gotta.
Can, whatever we need to do.
Buildings and grounds has been mowed, I believe.
Yeah, they have. There, I mean, there's more is mowing, if there's not really.
Not a lot.
There's not very much to mow, it's, you know, it's basically the parking lot out there, there is a small area around the edge, but I think building grounds has been mowed.
With this setting there, and the weather we're having, it's an.
Just that winter, I've got to wait right now.
Shut all the water off.
We discussed that back in October, and I think now that's, make sure you don't. All right, the City Hall jail issue has been postponed till the committee meeting because we don't have all bids in on it yet, yard sales. We'll discuss that and all that.
This is an issue that's been floating around for several months from some of our local businessmen, and I think it's a issue that we need to look at our ordinance to see if it's in conflict with the Arkansas statutes. And my, what I would like to do is, I've already gone through that every city in Arkansas that I can, and got their yard sale, garage sale ordinances, and kind of committee meeting, I want to do a draft of the ordinance that I think we need to look at.
There's, there's yard sales apparently out there, they're an ongoing, open business type of a situation where they're not blocking sales taxes, competing with our businessmen that are paying rent and mortgage payments and sales taxes, and they feel they cannot compete, so.
And also, our ordinance may be in conflict with the state as far as how many we can actually permit them to have in the near future. I want to check into that as much I can.
All right, congratulate you on placing the sales tax issue in front of voters, again, as we all know around this table, we've had, almost everybody in the room knows we as well need the funds. I think they're dedicated properly. Of the 10% that goes to parks, has to have city council approval to what facilities it's spent on, which I think is a good deal, because the Parks Commission, although they do a great job, they're not elected officials, they don't really have to answer to the public as much as a city councilman does. So with city council and Parks Commission deciding where those facilities are going to be and what kind of facilities, I think that secures the public a little more. Myself, I would like to see the first facility be some type of a community center slash indoor swimming facility that could benefit all the citizens of Harrison, and then once that was off the table and paid for, I'd like to see it go on down the road to include ball fields. We've had, we have had an expression of need for adult softball, walking trails, and that kind of thing. It'll generate at this point in time about $400,000 a year, close to, and there's a possibility that we could go out for financing on a project like that and allow that $400,000 a year to pay off the financing, and not have to wait for it to accumulate to do something like that, so. That would be an awesome asset for the city when you're trying to attract new businesses into town and retirees and that kind of thing, so. I want to thank you guys for going forward with that.
Mr. Chairman, I must report that we have now received a financial report from Park Department, and I'm quite sure that we could anticipate additional reports, importantly, as required by the statute.
Right.
I want to thank Park Department for that.
Yes, I also want to thank the Fire Department for all their work they did up on the Wabash Fire. Did a terrific job saving those sun and silos, the engineers were very impressed when they came in and surveyed them, met the work you did. You also had a few issues up there that endangered some people that were, you know, very, and very properly and promptly, and, and those things need to be addressed. And I think Mark has addressed some of those issues with Wabash as far as future maintenance of those silos and where those things might not happen again, but saved a lot of dollars in investment up there, a lot of cold nights. Proud of you guys for doing that. The street crews, the awesome job they did in the last few snowfalls, especially this past one, as cold as it's been, the streets are in great shape, not a lot of ice out of it all, there was a little bit of melting the other day, it refroze, but overall, they're in very, very good shape, so, very proud of them also. All I have?
Mayor, before you go into your comments or citizen comments, we received on our table tonight a handwritten letter. It's my understanding that this is an issue that state police controls, and I think it needs to go to them, and we stay out of this.
All, I also want to congratulate you on your acceptance of the chief's position first of all.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
I think that's a good decision.
I think I'll check out that. I didn't entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, bye.